Welcome to the Pocahontas Public Schools regular scheduled board meeting. Today is Monday, September fifteenth. Meeting is now in session. We'll turn it over to Dr. Arbuckle.
The first item you have on your agenda is the approval of minutes. Actually, we have our public comments section. I apologize. Last I looked, no one has signed up to speak, requested to speak at board meeting. So we're going to move on. Approval of minutes. You have in your packet, item three point one and item three point two. This is the minutes from the regular August meeting, as well as the work session from September eighth. If you have any questions about either of those, be happy to entertain those. If not, we just need a motion to approve.
Motion approved. The minutes, the meeting.
Motion by Gary.
Second.
Second by Brian.
A motion and a second. The motion passes four to zero. Think about it.
You want to vote?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
There you go.
Sorry, I was distracted.
That's okay. We're in a groove now. Okay, our first presentation of report will be the student achievement report, but this month's student achievement report will take place as a part of the report to the public. This evening, we'll have Mr. Carter and Mr. Lender address the board with the reports to public, but we're going to do that. Well, actually, I put those in action items. I'm not sure why, but we'll wait until we get down there to do those. So the second report, or this evening, will be on school safety. I've asked Mr. Green to kind of share with the board an update of the work that he and the principals and teachers did last week regarding school safety and bus evacuation. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Green.
Yeah, so last week, we completed a Rockville Phase Two of our evacuation, our bus evacuation plans. It would be for an event that required off-site evacuation, and then obviously a reification at that point. So what we were able to do last week was, we took one day each, one building each day of the week. We evacuated the entire building, down to the principals, you know, what people left from the building, where the secretaries and custodians. So we took buses over to the BRTC building. We've been working with them throughout summer to assign places within the RCDC building to where we can house our entire campus. So, you know, that's what we did Monday through Thursday, was took a day, picked a building, went, bus evacuated all the way over to BRTC, got them set their designated places, looked at no one, looked at rooms. We come back and debrief for about thirty, forty, five minutes with the next day of work on it. And so, though, by the end of the week, we had a really good plan going into the spring for Phase Three. I've been able to house the entire district under the roof of the RCDC building over BRTC. My plan will be for us to evacuate the entire district at one, in one morning. We don't have fleet numbers to be able to get the entire campus in one pickup and drop off, but the difference would be from this time, there won't be ten buses going to get one building. It will be all of our buses going to get elementary, whatever's left, coming to get its MD, and then as elementary's dropping, they're coming back and we're able to communicate with, you know, we have two buses in faculty MD moving in that evacuation, and then junior high, little senior high. So, you know, an entire district evacuation in one morning, all housed when you're in their designated rooms over BRTC. And then, fast forward into summer of twenty-six, I'd really like to kind of move into Phase Four. That's going to be the actual reification where we wouldn't use students at that point. I would like to get with our staff, maybe get some volunteers, maybe some kids, if one of your kids, they want some service hours to be able to drill that reification, what that would look like. When you're coming up to get your kids, we're ready to go back to where they are. It'll be out of sight of you. You'll go through the process, get your name tag, where's your kids, check in your ID, and then there will be a process that follows before you get your kids, which then will be walked out by a school employee to you, and then you'll be able to exit the building. So it's a large undertaking, taking a lot of time, effort, energy, and going to meet these things like that, a lot of time that I'm at the SROs and the principals of what it's going to look like. So I'm excited to be able to, to be able to get the entire campus off-site into one building, and I'm also excited to see what it's going to look like to try to do all that in one morning this spring.
We've got more questions. You talk, Darren, because of, you know, Dr. Wade, something happened. If we had, if we had a catastrophic event happen at, let's say, the junior high, would we evacuate the junior high MD and the senior high? Is there, is there a way to do that?
Yes.
Let's just give you, let's say we had an active shooter event that happened either in the junior highs and around the MD. We would want to evacuate all of these buildings. Is that possible?
Yes, sir, it would be. What that's going to look like is, they would, let's say that it was this building, they would call that the hot zone. So at that point, all buildings on this campus, and we put on, the elementary on lockdown, and at that point, being the hot zone, the first responders are going to come here first, neutralize the threat, and at that point, they will start releasing us class by class. So, in all honesty, you know, the event of something like that, it's going to be a little more feasible to evacuate the entire campus, because at that point, responders will be evacuating our students, literally classroom by classroom, as they clear them. So what that would look like, the event of here, probably be high school first, because again, this is a hot zone, it's going to take longer for them to go and clear them. We'd probably start with the high school kids at that point, let first responders, again, get here, take care of the threat, everything that they do in this building, and as they start clearing building to building, classroom to classroom, we would be staged during the horse shooting, evacuating at that point. Now, a situation where maybe, you know, a little more K R, it doesn't even matter, where the, hey, everybody needs to get out at this point, would be, you know, if we have a S-NAT truck that's got some asthma chemicals in it, it turns over right here, you know, the S-cars are making the turn, kind of light, and there's, everything within that apparatus has got to be evacuated. At that point, we're evacuating the entire campus at one time. And so that, that's when we'll look at, going, okay, let's get MD, we get them full removal, the rest of the fleet's going to junior high, and as that MD fleet gets emptied, they're coming back and they know they're going to high school. So yes, it is feasible. And that's what I thought, all right.
Okay. And that's, that could happen.
Over two thousand.
Well, and I, you know, I want to say, I don't know of another school district in the state, honestly. I'm sure there's somebody doing it, but that's taken on the responsibility that Craig has as far as, okay, we're going to practice an entire district evacuation to another location. I think, you know, we talk a lot about that. We, there's conversation, and I say we, in education in general, there's a lot of conversation about, we need to do this. We, a lot of times, will practice those building by building, but, you know, Craig's really taken on this, this sense of, okay, what is this really going to look like at the, at the district level? And I know we've had, we had chief vaults here every day, we had PD here every day, debriefing, looking at it, saying, what about this? What about that? Down to, how are the buses going to come through the, at BRTC? What does that look like? Changing the route to come back and get kids? So I'm really, myself, I'm really impressed with the, the work that our bus drivers are doing, our, you know, transportation, Craig, the building principals, all the way down. I, I'm with you, Gary. God forbid something happened, but we're practicing it and we're planning for it, and that's the only way to make sure it goes off well. Right? So...
Well, it is, since we talked about the announcement, what, just to have a discussion, what would happen, or do we have any plan in place? If we had some incident like happened at the Flow Rock this week, Friday night, and they had a shooting in the village church that involved him, do we have anything in place to evacuate the stadium? Or the gym? We had a basketball game going on, and it's a kind of catastrophic event? You know, look, no Flow Rock happened on Friday night. I don't know how they handled it.
Yeah. I mean, being after hours, that is something that occurs very often, I've talked a little bit about as far as what that looks like, but just having things in place, and then obviously, we have all of our admin and all the, you know, football games, we have our SROs on campus. As far as having a plan, we do have a safe, designated safe spot, but in the event of something like that, we won't be evacuating in terms with, you know, our buses, but we would obviously, at that point, disperse to the east and west, you know, exits. But that is definitely, we've talked...
Good common sense, and type of life, if something like that happened.
And it made, notice thinking about it, you know, God forbid there was an active shooter. We're going to be evacuating the students that are here on campus, but we also make it clear to them, when our SROs did a great job of getting into every single classroom in the first roughly six weeks of school, and having conversations with kids of, hey, what is a hardcore? What is a lockdown? First, a shelter in place, first, a hole. So we're trying to teach kids with that, with that terminology, that word, which means that they're not scared that we put them on hold, because hole doesn't mean threat. Hole just means we're going to stay where we're at, because there could be, there could be a spill in the hallway that we got one of them slipping on when they come out of class. And, so they've done a really good job of having those conversations where, yeah, if that is the case, and the kid has a chance to get away and get off campus and run, by all means, do that, we will find you tomorrow. Those evacuations aren't for the students that, you know, we are evacuating from class again, because in an event of something like that, it would be a lot...
We're good. Any other questions for Craig? Okay. All right. Our first informational item, item five point one, I just wanted to put this back on as an, as an informational item. Last year, it was really, it may have been around this time, maybe, I guess, a little earlier in the school year, but you may remember that I came to you and we had the recommendation for, to the board to hire a secretary to help Courtney in the sped office, and one of the things that that individual was going to do was, or that, that position was going to do, was help us with our Medicaid billing. And so I just wanted to bring this back for the board's information, that last year in the, or I say last year, in fiscal year twenty-four, so twenty-three, twenty-four, when that, when we didn't have that position, our reimbursement for Medicaid was a hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Last year, we added that, that position. One of that position's primaries responsibility, wasn't the only responsibility, but one of their responsibilities was to ensure that we were getting as much Medicaid reimbursement as we could. You'll see that last year in twenty-four, twenty-five, that reimbursement went up around thirty-six thousand dollars to two hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-six. So I bring that up so that the board is aware that those things that we're asking, that we're recommending, the board to put it, allow us to put in place, that we are putting in place, those things are, are making a difference, they are doing what we intended, intended them to do, and this is just another example of that, where that reimbursement that we're getting is, is much higher than the, than the investment that we put in, and that position is able to help us in other areas as well. And so, that's, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I thought that was a good piece of information, as Courtney and I were, were reviewing that over the last month or so. If there's no questions, just the second informational item, I just wanted to give board members a brief update on our project. I know, Gary, you were looking at the gym there before we got started, and we have met with our basketball coaches, Coach Burlington was there as well, some of the, some of the feedback that we have asked Todd to incorporate in the next phase of the drawing, as you'll notice on, I'll just grab it real quick. So you'll notice here that we have one coach's office, the coaches asked us to consider having a, two coaches' offices, one for the boys' coach, one for the girls' coach, put that more center in the, in the gym, so that it helps with supervision. Also, we're looking at, I think, up here, we have one laundry facility, we're looking at replicating two laundry facilities. So we're probably going to absorb, there's right now four sets, so there's eight locker rooms. We did have the conversation of six instead of eight, felt like that was something that was doable, so we're probably going to cannibalize these locker rooms, take a look at, going ahead and putting in two offices with laundry facilities as well, obviously, the bathroom facilities to go along with that. Lot of good feedback at our, at our community meeting that we had, had a lot of good feedback. One of them, about the gym, about the academic space. One of the things that was mentioned is the size of this hospitality suite, maybe being a little large, so I wanted the board, I'd like the board to kind of have some conversation about that, so I can know which direction we want to go on that. We've also talked about how do we, and I say we, this is a conversation Craig and I've had over the last couple of days, is making sure that this space is not just used, you know, three nights a, a year kind of thing, or that, so what does that look like to maybe turn that into a more functional space? It might, might get a little smaller just because of the, the office spaces, but use that as a more functional space that could serve as a hospitality room, it could serve as, you know, I don't know, film room for the basketball team, you know, lots of different options there on what that might look like. But again, I wanted to bring that up to the, to the board, so we can kind of have some discussion on, you know, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board on looking at that space as well. Okay with that? We want to continue that conversation.
Was the, the community saying hospitality room, or the coaches feel like it's too big?
Well, the conversation was with the coaches was more centered around the locker rooms, placement. We also did talk about, it doesn't have enough female bathrooms right now, so one of the things we talked to Todd about was taking this mechanical space here and here, moving that down to this end, turning this whole thing into female bathrooms here, and female bathrooms here, thinking that that would give us the needed twenty that we would need, and then this becoming a ma, two men's bathrooms kind of thing.
And they could square it off if they had to, I mean, in the front corners.
Could, yeah, could. So that's really, that was really the, the crux of that conversation. You know, I just know that at the community meeting, one of the conversations, or one of the statements that were made is, that space is larger than the locker room space we're allowing kids to change in, into.
Yeah, that's the thing that kind of, like you brought it up. I don't know how many P.E. classes you have, but you know, even the coaches sometimes, I know the basketball players will shoot around, coach might be in the office, but they shouldn't be under his visual supervision.
Correct, and that was what the record...
So it being centrally located would be, I think, ideal, but two hundred and twenty-six square feet is often small for a coach's office, I don't know what it is now.
What did we say it was? Seven?
Seventy-six.
With, that included the bathroom, correct?
That's the bathroom and foyer, the little foyer that's out front, or about there.
How many square feet?
Seven hundred and fifty-six. We measured one office, like, like there.
And how many, how many coaches are currently in that office, Coach?
Four million.
So, you know, if we're talking, if we're talking, right now, we're talking one seven-hundred square foot office for four coaches plus the athletic director, and in this, we're looking at two specific offices, and they're going to be closer to three, I guess, three-hundred square feet is what that one's on there right now, with, when you include the bathroom?
By moving it to the center?
No, that's, that's what it is right now. If we... Because you got two twenty-six, plus the eighty feet on the, on the toilet.
Yeah.
So you're looking at three hundred and ten square feet there.
Yeah.
So we take that, we move it here, and then replicate that here, so you have two of them.
Yeah.
In essence, you're doubling that, three hundred and ten into like six hundred and twenty, and right now, we're at seven.
Seven fifty-six.
And you could make those a little larger, and in doing so, you might make that footprint a little smaller.
Yeah, I could, you might too, you know, I think that'd be, I just would think that, you know, if you had, I'm sure you got a two-way weather here, so the coaches can always supervise the kids.
Yeah, that's why we're putting that, that's why we're recommending putting an office there with a window looking out at the court, and then you have a second one here with the window looking out at the court, and then maybe a smaller space in the middle that could be used for, you know, again, it could be a film room kind of thing, it could be a, a place, a gathering spot for Coach, when he's having meetings with all the, all the athletic coaches, could also be a hospitality suite during the tournaments, could also be a, you know, lots of different, that's the idea, is how do we get more utility out of that space than just, you know...
Could it be used as a classroom through the week and just used, I mean, if you had like a next year?
It could, it probably could be, as long as, I mean, if we're going to set it up as a classroom, then it would have to be eight hundred and fifty square feet.
Oh.
If we don't call it a classroom, then it can be whatever square feet I want it to be, and then we could use it for whatever.
Well, I mean, I was thinking like if you just did like some, some kind of health thing, or even for like physicals, or doing something, something that was brought in, you just have an extra space.
Multi-purpose.
Yeah, kind of a multi...
And that's kind of what we're talking about.
Good idea. One thing, though...
Like a club meeting?
And I don't know, Coach, friends, there's not a weight room for our basketball. I know we're presently using the dungeon, but my feeling on the dungeon, I think, like the stretch allows to put kids back in.
So I've talked to, I caught, talked to Dr. Stein this morning and asked him that specific question, and he said that under the previous, in essence, under the previous understanding that he had, he would agree with you and say, no, they wouldn't let us, they probably wouldn't let us do that. He, he told me a story, long story short, he was working with a different school district on a building that they wanted to reuse for a pre-K space, and in looking at it, what the state came back and said is, as long as you're not using it for academic purposes. And so my question to Dr. Stein was, can we use the weight room in the Rock building and let kids lift in there? And his answer was, under the current interpretation of the rules, the answer is yes, because they're not getting an academic credit for it. All right? So as long as we're not giving an academic credit for weightlifting in there, then we can continue on doing what we're doing.
And I think that's good, but I think, thinking out ten, fifteen years, you know, there's a liability of the condition of that building, and we know, you know, it's not going to get any better, so I think that's great for right now, but moving forward, I think we need to start thinking about, you know...
That's what I was going to say, just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
That's, that's true, and that's why we're having this discussion.
And if we can, for, and I don't know what a basketball weight room would look like, I mean, I don't know how many square feet you would need. No, it's not bigger.
No, it's not bigger than just one football. Casey and I had a discussion too, and in his mind, he would rather not bring them all together, that's, you know, room-wise, for his, because, like he said, next year, he's going to have about seven kids in senior high, got a good group of eighth graders, so number-wise, he's going to, he thinks that he's going to have big numbers, fifteen, twelve basketball players over in that, and add up to sixty-five, seventy-five, eighty, so he kind of talked about that. The ideal thing to me would be to put a weight room in that gym, because of what you said, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, and none of us are here.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, you know, if it's great, we could use the dungeon now, you know?
If you're building, you might as well do it now, while the, I mean, because coming back after the fact and putting that kind of stuff in costs twice a month.
What, what would a weight room look like? What would space would you need for, and I'm sure you're going to work, girls and boys would work separately.
Yes.
So, you know, what would something like that look like? Square foot is less.
I have no idea. I know, I mean, we could now, we could start looking at some things.
Yeah.
I, I would think if you're going to put, if you're going to invest in a weight room for basketball, currently, does volleyball use the complex weight room during offseason?
Complex.
So they...
Our, our girls' basketball uses a complex.
So then you would have, I just, I would like to see something available to other sports that they can use it, because that, right now, I mean, cheerleaders can't use, they don't get to go up there, your tennis team doesn't get to go up there, your swim team could really use a weight room good. And I mean, like, so if we added a weight room, is it going to be multipurpose enough where other sports could use it? Because right now, I mean, the complex is just football.
Anytime you can, you can reach more kids.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good thing.
I think, I think schedule-wise, you would have to just, you know, kind of...
Schedule it.
Yeah, you know, and some of them might have to come in at six-thirty, some of them might have to come in at four-thirty in the afternoon, or, you know...
But you know, some of those sports practice at six in the morning, if it's raining, they can go lift weights instead of being out.
Well, I know, you know, weight training, or basketball, and our other non-football sports is important, and it's getting more and more, even smaller schools are doing it now, and, you know, just want to accommodate them without sticking them in a building, that's not safe.
Well, and I think, I think that Craig will agree with this. I've always said, and I told Darren, I said in my interview here, the only reason I ever survived at Manila was a weight room. Here, would you agree with that, Craig? I mean, it's, I mean, it's a huge piece of any athletic program, and volleyball, girls, I mean, it's huge.
And I'd try, just to make really good point, we could, what about other sports? End of this, and it's something's beneficial, and that's, that's what I thought about, what benefits kids.
Well, I just know that my kid, I mean, she's in tennis and cheer, and she goes over to Black River to use the gym, or she pays to go to Black River Health Club to use the gym, because she can't use the gym here. And so it's like, you know, you've got other sports going that can't, can't do weightlifting, and they can't do these things here, because they're not the right sport.
Well, and looking at this design, do you see anywhere in there that we could carve out enough space?
I, I think one decision that Dr. Arbo, you know, I have to make is, okay, are you going to go with four dressing rooms, or are you going to go with six? I mean, Dr. Arbo, am I wrong on that?
Do we need six?
I just think that that's got to be...
Well, so I, I asked the question, do we need eight? And, you know, and the response was, we've done with, what, four for a long time, and, and so to have six would be, you know, more than what we've got now. But I think Coach's question is right, right? Do we, what does that, what does that look like?
But what, how crowded does it look when you only have four? I mean, when you're, you've got opposing teams coming and you only have four, I mean, like, my thing is, I don't want to build it and then it be just what we have, so it just, on a larger scale.
So four is enough to put two more in the gym whenever it's like tournament time, because I mean, now you've got four, which means the next game, you can already see in your locker, so they're going to have, you know, show them around.
So maybe a bare minimum of six.
Yeah.
I think that's the first question that we would ask to decide, in fact, we're going, we're going with six dressing rooms.
I would say, based on the, based on the feedback that I heard in having conversations, six was what people were comfortable with.
Because if you're hosting a state tournament, and all your teams are on, and they're not going to be co-megged in the same dressing room, trying to get in and out, you know, your two next teams can be suited up and ready. That team comes off the floor, they hit the floor, and, you know, it's like, say, I think with six, you know, you've got a good, good even balance.
So this is...
You got two, you got two playing, you got two waiting, and you got two more dressing rooms that could be getting cleaned and waiting for the next rotation.
Yeah.
So...
So as far as, y'all, correct me, because I'm not real up to par on this, but... So as far as y'all, correct me, cause I'm not real up to par on this, but gym equipment, could that be something where those dressing rooms are the weight room and that stuff can be moved out of the way?
I would say no.
Not feasible. I mean, for one time a year? No?
I would say no, yeah.
Well, let's just think about like before game night. I mean, you know, as a coach, every game day you're going, hey, get your shoes, put them in your locker, lock them up. This will be, even, even don't think about tournament, just think about a random Tuesday night thing.
Okay.
We've got ours and guess where those other teams are going? They're going into our senior girls' locker room.
Yeah.
With six, you'll, you'll never have that issue again. Hey, Coach, my shoes are missing. Or, hey, Coach, this is missing. Because that visiting team goes in those two lockers.
Into an empty room.
And they never go in our kids' locker room. I like that. I know, it's always been.
Except for a big tournament.
Big tournament, it's.
Which would be done every five years or something?
Right.
Well, I mean, an alternative to this as far as weight training for our other athletes, they just have to work in, try to work in the schedule and that.
We would just have an office in there and say, okay, what, what time slot do you want for your team? What time tennis, what time slot you want cheer, what time slot do you want golf, what could be?
You know, technically we have eight, because you can utilize these PE locker rooms also during, you know, tournament time. Because I mean, they're actually more square footage, the PE locker rooms for girls and boys is actually bigger than the girls' and boys' designated locker rooms.
Do we need PE locker rooms?
Well, that's what I'm saying, unless you, unless we, you may, we may end up cannibalizing those to get the coaches' offices and the laundry facilities.
Yeah, like I say, I mean, I think six is fine.
Yeah.
Well, and these may end up being locker rooms, like these are gonna go away, cause there's your coaches' offices.
Yeah.
Uh, if, well, would there be?
A thousand square foot should be plenty here. That's at least, that's probably bigger than even the dungeon right now.
The one we put in our complex down there is three thousand square feet and it's few months. I mean, you got the bars to make it. That's, that's, that's what you need for a rack and then a couple of feet of each one. There would be.
You do a lot of that, that's.
How many square feet do you think? I mean, so you can do a lot. I gotta, I think you gotta think about your stations, right? It's how, it's if I were to get platforms, I can do everything in one station for, you know, for the most part. And when we're thinking about most of our sports besides football, the volume of students needing those, you know, six racks, that's twelve kids right there, easy to mark it up.
You know, I, I'd say, you know, get some of the coaches, Mr. Brinkton, Craig, and y'all just revamp this how you think it needs to look. You know, on, you know, on a slipper sheet, because like I say, y'all are gonna be more in than no one.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you know, get square footage from somewhere else, comes taught, it's.
Well, we've got, like I say, we've got.
They could square up the front. Like that, those big corners in the front, they could square them up if they had to.
Now, that, 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 I just.
You know, what, what's not functional for y'all?
It's in those corridor spaces.
If we could.
Maybe you could do like carve out, just keep it a candleaway room.
To take up some of that void, so that's not just.
That's the whole thing.
Right.
Basic space, you know what I mean?
Candleway.
Which we're gonna have to ban with the weight rooms, that we got anyway more than likely unless we do some things to the Rock building.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I mean, so, I mean, like I say, while we're doing it, I mean, I'd definitely say put a weight room in here.
A thousand, a thousand square foot weight room is gonna be about thirty, about thirty-two by thirty-two.
So it's smaller than this room?
Bigger than a class, yeah.
Smaller than this room?
Well, you can get a full platform around it easily. That's a lot of room. I guess my question would be, do we see value in putting the weight room, a new weight room, not necessarily attached to the gym? And again, I guess my mind goes to, if we're going to make it a multipurpose weight room for all of our athletes, could we more than have to access our gym to get to the weight room? Or are we gonna have this situation where we're not gonna block it off, it's gonna be on the exterior wall where somebody could come into the backside? And I think that's, I think that's something to think about too, is having kids that are basketball, accessing your brand new basketball gym.
Having an exterior door to it. Yeah.
Magnificent way you can lay man space on the, the wall going towards the gym where it's on that end of the facility.
Well, if y'all decide to put a weight room like on this end, then it down here or like around the hospitality somewhere, I'd say we just make it entrance.
I think he said there was only fourteen feet though behind the gym and those complexes.
Athletic.
Well, but.
Well, I think.
We're gonna have to do something down there anyway structurally and, uh, landscaping-wise for the water, so you know, it'd be easier to put a towel in and put a sideboard in.
Yeah.
What I, I, and maybe I took this wrong, so.
Being able to, to be able to say.
So even if you put a, even if you put a backdoor to that, anybody walking in that weight room is still gonna have access to the gym floor. Alright, I think that was, that's the way I took Craig's feelings.
Unless.
Is.
But that's what I was saying, so instead of using that building there, you put the weight room inside the high school on, on the bottom floor towards, at their space, or to revamp some of those. Cause then we have a couple of classrooms that wasn't really designated for anything in particular.
Or, there's a huge space that we were talking about, like a courtyard between the gym and the high school, if you could put it, move that tower back or put it even in the middle there where you could access it from between the buildings.
I'm kinda in favor of keeping it, you know, localized, especially since your basketball is primarily the ones that use it. You know, football goes to one complex, you know, they've got their workout equipment and everything there. It'd be kinda nice if, you know, as opposed to, like right now, they have to go from the gym, which is just up the hill to the dungeon to do the workout, but, I mean, we're building a building here. I mean, I, I'd say put the weight room.
Inside, I, I, well, you know, if you look at this, maybe something we could, Todd would get. We're talking about making some changes here anyway. Just look at that as a total square footage and maybe rearrange it.
Here's the other thing that I think that you need to think about too.
Instead of having two coaches' offices, have one coach's office, but make it larger for all coaches.
Larger for all of them.
I know I might not say square footage, but, but just re- rethink.
Could they not shift the whole front end of that building down and use a corner? Make a big weight room up in the front?
Something else I need to think about on that backside, I hear Craig and I talked about this on this back.
Then you could access it with several doors.
Yeah, the idea that you're talking about.
One of the things that.
There's a time when the state is coming, not a going.
Is they like.
The state is gonna require.
The personality, they felt like.
That's coming. Don't you bet on you for your.
The front to it.
Have what?
A twinger, a nightcap.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not gonna say you're wrong, but then it just comes in the fall, so I think it's, yeah, that possibility. Cause somebody wants to live really mad, they can do it, but not be any money paid for.
Exactly. So it's, I, somewhere in that facility, there needs to be a train, a small training room. I say small, I don't know how big a training room needs to be. But there needs to be a training room.
Like I say, y'all take that end space and make it where it's the most functional for us. You know, like I say, you know.
Looking at the total.
Yeah.
And.
You know, there's, there's several nooks and crannies there that might not necessarily have to be there, you know, that you can make one big space.
Well, I could just think now's the time to do it, because we don't know what, you know, the future of the dungeon would be. I personally would, you know, with the column the building's got, probably questioning down the road, we would really want to put kids in for any reason. Uh, without repairs, the nature of the repairs, so, and you know, we, we've got space here to do it, hopefully. So let's, let's take care of our kids right here. And probably have the Houston football team dress in the seventh grade dressing rooms in the future. Remind someone over there. We're not repetitive on.
Right.
What is under the seating?
Storage.
The telescopes?
Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's some storage.
So it's not gonna be high enough that you could put a gym under the seats?
No, it's pretty tight.
It's, okay. Will you be able to access it easily? Like, it's not gonna be like the gym here where you can't get under there unless you're crawling?
No, it's gonna have a door where you can, you can probably throw some basketballs in there.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll add that to the, to the list and I'll share that with Todd and ask him to, to redraw some of that. Um, okay. Anything else on there? Alright, if not, we're gonna move to, uh, our first, uh, first action item. First action item is the monthly financials. So you have in your board packet, the, uh, board report as well as the revenue summary and the expenditure summary. Um, along with that, you have the, the other items that we include every month, the activity report, um, the information right out of, uh, e-finance. I will share that, um, when you look at, let me see which one. Nope, that's not one. When you're looking at the, um, expense summaries, you'll notice that, um, the year-to-date budget is zero. That budget is, uh, something that we are, uh, still working on. We uploaded that today. We're looking at the reports. Um, you will see later in the agenda that I would like for the board to come back together when we do our, the date of our walkthroughs, which is tentatively scheduled for next week on the twenty-third. At that point, we would have a special board meeting long enough to, um, approve the budget. Um, but starting next month, that budget, uh, once the board approves that budget, uh, the budget column will be filled in and you'll have something to compare that to. Right now, what you're looking at on those expenses is really the period expense from period two and the, um, compared to last year at this same timeframe. You'll also notice that, uh, in the federal monies, we've still got some federal monies that have not, um, not come into us yet and that's why you see the, uh, red, uh, numbers on the revenue summary and the board report in, uh, in Fund Six.
I'm making a motion to approve the monthly financials.
It's been a motion and a second. Everybody that approves, say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, say no. Motion passes four to zero. What is, what is high school coffee? Where's that? Where'd it go?
Teachers want lots of coffee?
It's an, well, first of all, it's gonna be an activity account.
Where did it go?
So.
Coffee House, P H S Coffee House. It's what?
She sold the waters.
Why is it called Coffee House?
It's just, they used to have coffee, when I was, you know, I was in school.
Oh.
When I was teaching, I used to have, I think, those were the coffee rooms, I think.
Oh. Oh, okay. It caught my eye. Sorry.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the, um, report of the public from the elementary school. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Carter.
I know the doc has shared material this much, so I've met the bar of confidence if you prefer. So, pretty, starting with the basic information and working through, uh, enrollment. Enrollment in kindergarten was again, a smaller number than what we've been used to. This is two years in a row. So we're at one thirty-three and one thirty-six last year, we dropped to one twenty-nine, that group in the first grade. So our total count is six sixteen this year. That includes preschool, sixty preschool students. We did drop one teacher in first grade with that smaller group, so we're now down to, uh, six classroom teachers in first grade. Everyone else maintained where we were and, matter of fact, we even added a special ed classroom, a second resource classroom this past, this year. So we're looking at, at the summit of data from the spring. These are, the total counts from Atlas. And they're basically a break into the four categories, which is basically, uh, needs improvement, just below performing, performing at level and then advanced. The chart that you see there, which Messi has, and we're looking at three areas, mathematics, E L A, which is English reading, and then science. On the next page, you'll see a combined group levels one, levels two, those are the students in need of services, three and four are at level or above level. And our percentage marks. You can see that we are very close to the state levels in our math. And we are above the state in need of services in reading by eleven percent and in science above by about thirteen percent. Now, we had took those two groups and divided them into, this is how it's reported to us, into four levels. Performance levels one, two, and three in math. You see, we hold very, very close to the state on our math sections. Level ones are twenty-seven percent, uh, level two, thirty-five, the state is at thirty-three. And then we're one percent higher than the state on level three and only two percent lower on level fours in math. Literacy, the difference definition there. We're at thirty-three percent on the lowest level, whereas the state's at twenty-nine. We're at forty-two on the mid-level and the state's at thirty-five. Then we're very similar in our level three, performing at level twenty, the state's at twenty-one. Advanced, we're at five percent, they're at fifteen. The issue with level two is, on literacy, they have five areas that they score. And if they score in those areas in need of services in three areas, then they're identified in level two. But also if they score in that area in level, on two areas, they're scored in level two. So there's a range there. For example, out of that forty-two percent in level two, that's sixty kids. Well, twenty-six of those are above the median score and thirty-four are below the median score in level two. So level two is a given test, but officially they are in need of services. But the way we look at them, we have to break them down into smaller groups. The ones scoring at the bottom of level two, the ones scoring at the top of level two. So we have that broken down as well. Okay, moving into trend data. Those are summit of scores. If we look at trend data over the last three years in math compared to the state, we basically, uh, we have been above the state on performance of twenty-three, still above the state of twenty-four. We had a negative growth in twenty-five. And the state is along a very similar growth, well, their growth came better in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, whereas we were decreasing in twenty-five this past grade. Now, in reading, again, we were above the state growth in twenty-three, still above the state growth in twenty-four and in twenty-five, we performed lower than the state growth. If you convert those numbers over to percentages, it's seven point eight percent negative growth. They had, uh, six tenths at the state level in negative growth. Both are negative, but ours was a grade loss. Continuing with trend data, in math, we broke it down and literally broke it down into the four, four groups, performance groups again, level one, two, through four. The, level four is of course performing above grade level. We had a gain in that group in twenty-three to twenty-four. We had a smaller gain in twenty-four to twenty-five. Same thing, this is pretty much across the board. Level three, performing at level, we had a gain from twenty-three to twenty-four, a smaller gain from twenty-four to twenty-five. We've continued the same pattern, twenty-three to twenty-four, we lost two hundredths of a point from twenty-three to twenty-five in group, our level two. And we lost that four point eight percent. And we lost that 4.8% from 24 to 25. I'm talking in, we're in math there. But the same scenario carries in the literacy, the ELA. Went ahead and pulled the data from the ADE data center and included the graphs there. You can see this group, or this third grade, coming from 23 to 25. Basically, it's turning to what the previous page was and just into the graph for you. So we had a gain in math and then a loss. And we had a small loss in the ELA from 23 to 25 and then a larger loss from 24 to 25. Is the second chart, second graph there. So, to address some of these issues, we've made some big changes. New material in math, K-3, actually, it's a K-6 change, but I'm just reporting on the K-3. So Intermath was adopted this past spring. We have that all in place and all the materials now are distributed and being used by all teachers. We had, in June, all the teachers minus about four or five, came in, spent five days in intensive professional development, looking at our reading materials. We adopted this material, what, five years ago? And when we originally adopted it, we had maybe a day's worth of training. This five days, they broke it down to the very nuts and bolts of the curriculum and have a much better understanding of that implementation for open court or wonders. Those are the two comprehension sides of Lit, as well as our 95% was redefined. That is the bottom of the rope, that's the pandemic awareness, the fomings. So we have a better understanding of that curriculum, which what we're leading to, we're gonna be monitoring is a better performance for our teacher implementation this year. We're going back to what we used to call tip time and we changed the name to redskin time, kind of following along with the rest of the district as we can on end. That's where we're taking the iReady summative scores that we're getting right now. We're gonna regroup student performance, or students into their performance levels, into their needs-based groups. Each grade level, we will resort, so we'll resort into basically low, middle, and high performance. Classroom teacher will be assigned to the lowest groups at the beginning and, because they will be a large group. Once we continue to purpose monitor in the iReady, those groups, as we did two years ago, got smaller and smaller and smaller. Once we got to the end of the year, we had small groups in the intervention need, larger groups in the performing at level and above, we'll flip that for expansion. But we're going back to that this year in order to basically address individual student needs that we're collecting from iReady. And that's 40 minutes daily. We have not used iReady until this year, so it's something new for us. The rest of the district have been on it for a few years. It should provide us with very intricate lesson plans based on student performance. So when we regroup them, we'll have the lesson plans, able to hand to the teachers, say, hey, these are the skills, these are the lessons that we're wanting you to teach with this particular group of students. So we're excited about that. We didn't, originally, we had to come up with those lessons ourselves, year before last. Our dyslexia and our RTI is very similar. We have one added advantage this year is our speech servicing team is now providing kindergarten readiness assessment to 34 kindergarters and interventions. This was kicked off in order to address the incoming kindergarten need. And based on the kindergarten readiness assessment, they are servicing 34 out of the 133 kids identified already at this point. Dyslexia in first grade, you see, is zero. We have not made huge growth in identification dyslexia, which is good, eight, and then five in third grade. Those same ladies also serve our tier three intervention students. You see the numbers there, 16 in first, four in second, and 10 in third grade.
What do you think of the reason for your drop from eight to five? Was that maybe moved out of the district or they maybe decided they didn't need it or they were doing okay with it?
Which one?
Like, the second to third grade where you dropped from eight to five?
For dyslexia?
Yeah.
A lot of that's gonna be moved, moved in and moved out. Once they start, dyslexia intervention is four days a week for 40 to 45 minutes, four days a week. So, we don't drop them.
Okay.
They stay in that program, they usually come over to fourth grade, still receiving those services. And now it's the exact same service, same program, and it just continues through. As long as they have that identification, unless they were to get at level or above, we wouldn't even review.
That's what I was kinda worried, it didn't seem they would from second to third grade. I mean, not for dyslexia, I didn't.
Right, that's not due to anybody being dismissed.
Gotcha, okay.
We've maintained the same curriculum except for math. But in literacy, we've maintained 95% for the bottom of the rope. Open court is kindergarten through second for the top of the rope, comprehension, vocabulary, things like that. In fourth, third grade, we switch over to wonders for the comprehension. Now, that, those five days in June also identified a hole that we had not been aware of. We've dropped 95% out of third grade, because it's truly not designed for third grade. We were using it because of the intervention. But we were implementing it like a tier one instruction. We've backed off of that and we are now using morphology, which is the next level above 95%. Up until this year, morphology was being used with the older students and basically we relooked at the alignment and said, hey, we shouldn't be doing 95%. That's, that's too low for third graders, we need to pull into upper level foms. So that is an improvement for third grade Lit instruction. We trained the rest of the title pairs and the dyslexia interventionists actually today and Sunday. Systems, that is the program chosen and implemented for all dyslexia kids and tier three RTI exchange. Pretty much, I covered the next one, targeted improvements. That slide was just there. We are implementing capturing kids' hearts this year, that's a new program based for culture and student involvement, teacher, classroom settings, which then expand over to the whole building settings. Redskin Academy is still in place, it started this past week. I think it's only been going one week at this point. It makes four days a week at MD Williams, we bus those kids over to MD. And I know that their numbers are up this year. The program was well liked last year and outcomes almost doubled, I believe, in the whole program.
158 kiddos right now.
Wow.
That's a lot. So we're continuing with family involvement and as always, we do musical performances. One thing, we went to Bailey's, Bailey Group today and she visited each building. One of the topics that we discussed, or I discussed with her individually, is re-implementing a few things we did years ago. The community involvement pieces, meaning where we go out, we visit community. We're gonna expand that by inviting the community pieces in to visit the building, walk through it. As you know, at Alma, if you've been awhile, you've been awhile, you've been around awhile. At Alma, we had very much an unbelievable parent involvement group. They were always on campus, coming and going, helping out and very good support from the community. Since COVID, we have not worked very hard to build that back, we're taking small steps. So this is just another year that we're gonna hand back one of those things that we used to do in hopes of expanding the community knowledge of where we are and what we're doing. Last year, we started taking more volunteers, that was another piece we discussed today. At our open house orientation, we collect volunteer names. Started that back just last year after COVID. This year, we're implementing that further and spreading it, spreading it out more. So these are volunteers to come in and do art with the students, come in into the music classroom, particular instruments that they have skills in that can disengage with the students and maybe encourage interested in other areas. Readers, that would be in the library, volunteer readers and things. PE, it's not that easy to find, somebody would come in and do a PE presentation, but they are there and people have signed up and said, hey, I'd like to come in and talk about this with PE classes. So we are expanding that further again this year. Any questions, I can answer.
Any questions for Sean?
Oh, I was gonna say, I got some feedback from a teacher in your building bragging about the cleaning service.
Oh, yeah.
How clean their classrooms had been.
That is a changeover.
Yeah.
It'd be very positive, yes.
Yeah.
And they are very, yes, the floors look better than when we moved in at this point. And any communication, interaction with them has been positive. They check in every week to find out where we need a little bit more attention and their managers have been very receptive and helpful.
Good.
And then it gets done. So, we have one day porter and he focuses mostly on the cafeteria. It's, in that program, they call it a day porter instead of a custodian.
Okay. Yeah, the feedback was good, how the classrooms were clean.
Mm-hmm. There have been a few days that they've missed it, but that was early in, early on. We think maybe they had some issues getting into particular classrooms and down in certain halls, but very, very minor issues with them. The benefits are greatly outweighed in problems.
Want your microphone, Mr. Lender?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
One of the things I wanna point out as Mr. Lender's getting ready to view his, I'm gonna take you back to page 61 real quick, if you don't mind taking a look at that. I think this slide in particular on the growth trend is a, exemplifies or illustrates a conversation that I happened to have with a teacher on late last week. Who, we were having, I was having some group conversations with grade level teachers about instruction, about, you know, supporting teachers. And a teacher said to me, we feel like we really need some additional training, some additional support in helping kids with the inclusion portion of what we're doing. So, you may be aware that the state over the last couple of years has really been pushing, which I completely, completely agree with, pushing that the best place for a special education student to learn math is in a general ed classroom with a general ed math teacher, right? Best place to learn math for any student is with a math teacher, right, Mr. Helms?
Correct.
Exactly, right? Same with science, same with English, same with, so that's, that's really been a push over the last couple of years. And I think, excuse me, a lot of times, I'm not stereotyping, but a lot of times, those kiddos, those are the kiddos that when they're looking at Atlas growth and Atlas performance, are scoring at the lower levels, the lower one, the lower two, level two. And so when you look at this particular slide, you will notice that our teachers are getting growth out of our kiddos in level three and level four. And I would contend that the struggles that our teachers are seeing in levels one and two very well might go back to the support, the training, the, again, the support that we're offering administratively, me included. And so I think what this tells us, especially like when you look at ELA, where even in level two, our teachers are seeing growth, but in level one, we're, we're not seeing the growth that we might expect. And this teacher said to me, we need help understanding and training in how do we support kiddos at the lowest levels? And I thought that was very insightful. And so that is something that as we continue to look for ways to provide our teachers better knowledge base, more training, more support, more tools, that's an area that I think we're going to really double down on to. Because I think our kiddos could really benefit and our teachers could really benefit from that kind of training. So, I appreciate it, Sean, thank you very much.
The other point about that number, literally the number you were talking about, out of that 47 tested, eight, only eight of that 47 were not identified. So, 39 students were either SPED or ELL, so.
Or both.
Exactly, or both, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Lender.
I'm glad that you broke this down.
Keep it down, it's higher.
I remember last year, I remember.
Does anybody need a hard copy of yours?
Everybody's got a copy of it.
I didn't like to cut it for you anyways.
I appreciate.
Being resourceful.
I'll have to give you mine. Looking on the first, I've kinda started about the same format Mr. Carter has. Fourth grade, that's our big group, 148, 143 in fifth, that seems to be the one that has grown the most since we started. It was down fairly low, it's probably come up since we started school, 15 kids at least. 112 in sixth grade, we're about three different from last year at this time. But honestly, this was from last Wednesday, I believe, is the date. I'm pretty sure we enrolled either two or three today. So, I know we didn't get rid of any, so we're, we're probably gonna be at 405, 406. So, pretty similar numbers, just a little bit different, the way we've got them split up. Teachers and staff, we're down one from last year, we got six in fourth grade, six teachers in fifth grade and we have five teachers in sixth grade, but we changed it up a little bit. In all of our grades, from what we've done, we've got it in, in groups or pods like we had for some time. But fourth grade, we went with a three teacher pod, so you have a math teacher, a literacy teacher, then you have a science, social studies. We have two groups like that. We have the same thing in fifth grade with two groups and in sixth grade with an odd number of teachers. We have a group of three and we just have a group of two that split that up. So, works out virtually the same. We still have alternative education, we've got one teacher in there. Four SPED teachers, five teachers in activity, paraprofessional, full staff, about 58. But the one thing we have done this year is in the past, our activity, and I think this is a pretty big thing for us, our students are excited. We used to have two PE's, we had two PE here. The kids liked it, but they actually, we got rid of one of the PE's. They have a basic PE like they always have, they get their minutes and we added a STEM rotation. So, science, technology, engineering, and math. So, Ms. Tanner had been a long-time science teacher in fifth grade. She went to this and she's actually a rotating, so kids all see her one time a week and she's, she's doing for the most part hands-on, whether it be computer programming, whether it be engineering stuff. It's almost like I kinda, how we kinda look at it is, the kids still have a science teacher in that grade, but this is kinda more on the college side where you have a science class every day and then that once a week, you're going to a science lab. So it's kinda that philosophy, but the kids, I mean, you know, parents come in and try to check kids out every now and then and they're like, no, we got STEM class today, can I come back in an hour? So I think, you know, can, can you get me in an hour?
You didn't hear that last year, did you? Did what, did you hear that last year?
Did not hear that with PE, you would think kids would like, but after, oh, this is more fun than PE. So, so that, that's something we got. And also in sixth grade, they, we offered a, we still have band, but those kids that are not in band have a, we'll call it STEAM. Same thing, you add the arts in there, part of the arts would be the band, music. But they're doing it on another level. We're really, we're kinda started, but we're still waiting on some supplies that are ordered. A lot of them are back ordered, but they're really gonna focus on a lot of programming. We bought these little called circuit playgrounds or in the process of buying. We have some, they can program these things with coding and, I'm starting to talk things I don't know, but Python and some different coding software that allows them to make their own video games and make things like that. So, should help Mr. Helms out quite a bit, once they get to high school, have a little basic. basic knowledge. They're, they're really excited about that, we're, they do that every day, and it's, it gives those kids, you know, we had a lot of kids going to band, but then we had a lot of kids, they were like, well, if I don't go to band, I'm gonna be, just, it was more of a study hall, where it was some things like that. This is something that's a little more fun, it's always hands-on, so it's been a, it's been a good thing for us. If you keep going, we got, I got some of the same kind of information Mr. Carter did, here's Atlas data in math, and same thing, the levels here, if you look, and what I have here is, if you look, it says cohort, cohort current grade, so that's a current fifth grader, but we've got this, we've got the level from when they were in third and fourth, we got it, because we kind of overlapped that last one. But a lot of those numbers, and that's the percentage of kids, level one being lowest, level four being the highest, we study that, we look at it, but what's, if you go back through here, several, several pages, we get into what we've really been looking at. There is some iReady stuff in here, and we like the iReady stuff. I shouldn't say we like it more than the Atlas stuff, but the Atlas is, once a year, you get those numbers, and then there are some intervals, but there's pretty good while in between it. The iReady data that we look at happens, the kids do iReady every week, so that's always changing. They do go in and do this diagnostic, but then as a teacher, you're looking at that at their iReady account, and you can see what's happening. What did they do this week? What level are they on this week? So you're not always going back, you know, well, what did they do at the end of, end of the school year last year? So it's a little more up to the date, but if you keep coming over, you have this Atlas level growth, we get to that, and that's really what the teachers and myself are starting to look at more now. And what you look, what I've got here is like our Atlas Growth ELA, if you look, it's showing by the readiness, but that average growth score over there, if you have a negative, then that is, the state is saying that a score of zero is your expected growth. So not necessarily good or bad, you know, it's just, you're expected to make a zero. If you don't make a zero, if you're below that zero, you are a little bit off. If you're above it, you're making growth. If you look, some of the numbers are not a lot, but there is growth. And if you look at level two, three and four, there's growth in all that, when you get to level four, pretty significant growth.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna point out.
Had said, and, and I think if you, when I get to these other pages, you'll, you'll look at that too, is, I think in all of my, all of the negative growth, you'll notice is that level one for the most part. And level two is kind of, as Mr. Carter said, level two is not, not necessarily bad, there's multiple parts to level two. It's like, you could be a level two and be a little below where you need, or you could be a level two and you're a little below, but we're happy with the score, is kind of how the state would look at it. But if you look at those English language, you're gonna see positive growth in three of the four levels. If you click over to the math, there is two, the first and second level, but pretty good growth in the level three and four. And same way, science, you kind of see the same thing, that level four in science growth was really significant. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big number for us, we're happy to, we're happy to see that. But let's say there is some, there's a little bit of negative in those slow levels, but we are thinking that, hey, some of those, some of those guys need a little more help, and it would be, it would be our guys that are English language learners, but this is not leaving anyone out, this is the entire building as a whole, whether you are receiving special services, whether you're dyslexic, whether your English language is a second language, whatever, this includes everyone. So when, if you keep breaking it down, you know, we could, we could break down numbers kind of forever here and overwhelm you with stuff, but when you put it as a whole, I think the growth is looking up. Actually, I put that in here because I was kind of proud of this page for the next, last year, we did get kind of noted, notified by the state, they gave us some scores, and they break the state into, I think it's five regions, if I'm not, pretty much each corner of the state and central. We're in that northeast, I think we were considered region one or something, but that northeast, region one, it had about a hundred and eight or a hundred and ten schools, and it's something like that. And there were a couple kindergarten centers, or a private school, or something, a charter that had like eleven kids in it and things like that. But if you take, if you took those three or four out, we were in the top ten percent, not in scores, but in our growth level, out of a hundred and, so, you know, we were about ten out of a hundred and ten schools. So that was something to celebrate, we were, we were pretty happy, kids loved to see that, we got a banner put up, and they, they're a part of it, so. If you go on, dyslexia, we're kind of the same, we do the SUNDAY system, they were all trained today, we've had three trained in the past, plus Ms. O'Donnell, but then what we've done this year is we trained all of our pairs today, so we don't, we're not necessarily putting everybody on it, but we do have them trained if there's somebody that's out for an extended time, or it's just good knowledge, if, if our pairs are working with these kids in a one-on-one situation, and they notice they're having a couple of reading, that's just some more strategies that they're gonna have, you know, to work with them. But our numbers stay pretty close to the same, we don't get rid of a lot of dyslexia, they, they just stay in the program, move on, they're moving up, but I'm trying to think how many levels there are to, there's fifty or sixty or something like that level. So the way those are set up now, we do have some, I talked to, I talked to Ms. O'Donnell today, and we're, we're looking at a little possible RTI dyslexia, I wouldn't say overall, but we're looking to change things around like our junior high and high school have done this year with the Redskins time. They're using a program that schedules some time and we're trying to, we're gonna try to incorporate the same thing they're doing to give a lot of our kids, they'll be able to get their interventions and their dyslexia lessons, but it will also allow some of our kids to get our, if our kids are out of dyslexia or in, they're needing some enrichment, it would allow some enrichment opportunities, as well as, where we took it as, I mentioned it to some of the teachers, and we're kind of in the planning stages, but it opened up, it's, it's gonna open up some things for us as far as having community members come in, and they may be able to teach a class, it may be one day through the week, but kids would be able, if you came in and wanted to teach about hunter education, these kids would be able to join that. So they would have an option of, hey, I've done my dyslexic, dyslexia for the week, I had my math interventions, I have one day and something I get to pick. It might be somebody coming in for that, or it could be anything, it could be, we've even talked about, of course, sports are big, you're able to go and do one day, have a little baseball camp for, and these are thirty-minute times, but it's, it's kind of a reward for, hey, I worked hard, I made progress on my iReady, I've, I've done what I needed to do, now I get to pick something. So we're gonna try to use that as a little bit of reward. That's, that's in the early planning stages, we started, I guess, last week, but it's gonna take a little bit to work the bugs out of it. It's a little different than, the senior high's using it, and it's working well, but they, they're senior high kids, so it's gonna take a little more instruction for our kids to, to kind of get used to checking your email and going in and applying for some of these classes and stuff. But we're, we're gonna try and work through that. Curriculum, we're about the same as we were last year, except we have added different math, the N2 Math, and I've got that HMH as the company there, HMH Math, that's going well, we've got all of our stuff in, we're waiting on a little bit of an order for some of our wonders, supposed to be in this week, so we've had to do a little copying and some things like that over the past couple of weeks, but we got new curriculum coming in, same thing we've been doing the last couple of years, but all that's going well. Some of our improvement plans and ideas, we're still doing iReady, I think this is our second year for iReady. Like I said, it gives us some current, a lot of current information, and when you look at it compared to the Atlas scores, it's very similar to what we see in Atlas. After-school Redskins Academy, like I said, it's, it's going strong, I would've swore there was way more than a hundred and fifty of them today. Ben and I built it, I thought there was about four hundred, got off the bus today, but those little guys are pretty excited in the afternoon. Science of reading, teacher observations, we're still looking into that, we do have a new teacher or two that's working on finishing that up. Like I said earlier, the Sunday system, everybody's got that. Couple other things at the end that we're doing, we got a new music teacher, so we're still planning on our Veterans Day assembly, that's if you're not in, that's a, a big assembly, we're hoping to get KAIT up here again, that was kind of some publicity for us last year, went over well. We still have some of the same clubs and stuff. One of the things that we do have though, capturing kids' hearts has been very popular, but another thing that is actually Coach Peele's idea, it happened at another school he was at, we, right now, we just call it student and staff good calls. It's, we're kind of working on changing that into Remarkable Redskins and stuff, but what happens is, we have our kids, and if they're caught doing something really, really good, like a good example was the very first, first week of school, Coach Eddington was trying to throw a bunch of balloons or something away, and the wind coming up like it did right at dismissal time. Well, I had two boys that walked to the high school every day after school, there were fifty balloons flying across the park, they were going everywhere. Those boys, without being told, started picking up balloons, they helped, they went through it away, spent time, they spent time we didn't ask them, they just did it. We're up to fifty-something calls home, and what we do is, when we get that, a teacher or staff member nominates somebody, we bring those kids in the office, and we call home, we just ask, who do we need to call, we're gonna brag on you. So if it's mom, dad, someone say, can you call my grandma or something? You know, we call, more times than not, the parent is in tears when we get off the phone because they're like, we, we just don't get many calls positive like that all the time. So it's been a super good thing, we've had a couple of staff members even, if a staff member's caught doing something exceptional, we call home, or we call, we call the person of their choice, that's a little embarrassing for them, but it worked out.
Well, my husband's telling me.
It was pretty funny, we actually called her mom, because one of our teachers over here does some really good things, and her mother, this wise one out in Mr. Carter's building, we sat Ms. Tillmire down with us and said, okay, we're calling mom to tell her about some good thing. She was embarrassed the whole time, but it was a fun call, and she liked it at the end, and it was, it gives everybody just a good feeling when you walk out, you know, you get to come to the principal's office, and I let them get a little prize, even the, even the teachers, and they, they go a little, little pidget to go away with, but it's been a good start to the year so far.
Brenda, did you ever call your parents?
No, I never wanted them to call home.
Thank God, if you could, I would've promised. Did I have any questions on anything?
Any questions for Mr. Lender?
I have one question, our parents, how important are they?
How important? I don't know that, I don't know that I could run a school without them. I mean, as far as multi-aspects, as simple as duty, is we have more duty slots that you need to fill than you do teachers that you can fill. So that's, most of my parents do, I'm gonna say an hour.
I noticed we have a lot of term.
They have a lot of term on the work.
Is it mainly, you think, based on pay?
Yeah, that's the complaint usually, so it's not.
I mean, it's very minimal.
It's minimal, it is. They're, I mean, I get that, they, they tell me that, like, man, I wish I had a red intelligence, and they have gotten some, but.
My question is though, I mean, most, typically, most of your parents are gonna be ones without college education.
Right.
Or ones, I mean, so I, is it, is it mainly complaining of the pay? I mean, if you look at the hours they work, plus the days they work.
They make ten dollars an hour.
They make a real minimum wage.
But is it because of the contract days that it, when you straighten it out?
Contract days is probably what would keep them here. I think that's one of their positives.
Okay.
Most of our pairs are twofold, you either have somebody that wants to be a teacher, we didn't have a position available, we did have a pair of positions, so they'll take it. It's like, now I'm in, you know, I can prove to you that I can do good work, and if a position comes open, I want it. So that's great, because it's almost like you're test driving the, the teacher, you know, for, you hire them.
Like I say, I think their salary right now is sixteen seven a year.
No, that sounds about right.
That's about right. It, it turns out to be about maybe eleven, something.
Yeah, it's, it's about, that's where it starts.
I'm basing on fifteen, fifteen hundred and sixty hours. Is that roughly what they were?
Are you figuring that over just the contract days, like dividing it up around salaries?
Hundred and.
It's a hundred and seventy-eight days.
Now, same as the kids. You know, their, their average work is about thirty-eight hours a week.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, it's about, I think we're paying them on a seven-and-a-half-hour contract.
Thirty-seven and a half, I think is their actual time.
Well, we can look, it's quite, you know, I noticed that, you know, every meeting we have, or either having a parent leave, you know, I think we need to leave it at our here disposal, or in the principal's disposal, if you've got a really good parent, let's, let's try to keep those positions filled, you know, with a little bit of, you know, incentive layer or whatever.
And there, and, you know, it's, different teachers use them for different things. There's, there's days where we have very, we have a lot of testing on Friday, it's just, you know, it's just how it goes, with a lot of those small groups, like, for example, if we do Atlas testing, or we're about to do interim Atlas testing, a lot of these guys, whether it be special ed, five oh four plan, stuff like that, need small group testing or things like that. The state kind of come through this last year, so we actually use our pairs as proctors. Last year was the first year we could do that. In the past, it had to be a teacher, state opened it up, so like I have a fourth grade group that's gonna be testing in about two weeks, I'm gonna need all of my teachers in seven small group classrooms to pull, because some of them have like two kids according to their IP. So without pairs, I would have to pull, say, fourth grade or fifth grade to come down for fourth, which may not have to have a sub in that fifth grade class. So on just regular testing on like a Friday and stuff, like a lot of, what, what we try to do is, if, if your plan says you have test read to you, because you're in dyslexia, let's say, and you need to be small grouped, and have your test read to you on the Atlas test, we try to keep that same accommodation going through the year most of the time, so.
I kind of wondered, would we not be better off to hire more pairs with a little bit higher pay than the pay to substitutes that we have today?
Well.
Because it seems like our substitute funds that we spend every year are astronomical.
It is, it is, I think it's, I, so this, I'm gonna, we'll kind of fast forward, one of the things you're gonna see in the budget next week, when we present that, is I have budgeted about ninety-nine thousand dollars in there to pilot a, a attendance piece, right? So giving teachers and our classified staff an opportunity.
Working their days.
Right, to access, you know, more money, I'm think, right now, I'm thinking about five hundred dollars, but I haven't, I haven't taken it to PPC, that's something that, you know, we'll talk about, and then it would go to PPC. But it's this idea that, and that we can incentivize people being here, because if we have, you know, the parent who we hired, or the teacher that we hired, who is here instead of taking a sick day or a personal day, or whatever that looks like, then that kid. kid's better off, right? And we can, we can reallocate some of those funds that we're using for substitute into paying, giving that money to our teachers instead of giving that money to E S S. Right, so.
How much, what was our funds last year to E S S?
Uh, well, we, we budget, it's, we budget every year about three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars to pay for subs. So it's gonna be in that three-hundred-thousand-dollar neighborhood.
You know, I'm sitting here, if you took that and cut that in half with pairs that had a little bit better pay, you know, you could almost, I mean, we could say almost half that, because your pairs are probably more than likely gonna be here on the days that a teacher, you know, kinda like floating.
Right.
You know, just food for thought, you know, I mean, it just, it just seems like we have a lot of turnover on pairs, and I know it's because of the pay.
Or, I mean, if you looked at incentivizing the pair, if you had to pull a pair of a sub in a classroom that day, are they making less than what a substitute, and then could you pay them more that day? If they had to be a sub.
But, you know, you take a para and they're subject to the Aprils withholdings and everything else, correct? Well, by the time you take sixteen-seven, and they take, what is it, five percent out of each paycheck?
Seven.
Seven, you know, you take seven percent out of each, I mean, but there's not much left, you know?
But incentivizing them somewhere. I mean, I'll pay you an extra fifteen dollars today if you sub, instead of whatever, you know what I mean? Like, just, because if you could make a certain amount as a sub, what is the benefit to be a para, if you could work every day as a sub?
Yes, I will say this, most of our pairs are making more than what the subs are, are gonna make. Cause, you know, you're gonna.
They're not here on a daily basis, it's necessary.
Correct, I mean, I, I, I ran it today, and because I was having a conversation with a, a para, and that para's daily rate is about a hundred and twenty-six dollars a day, where we're paying a sub somewhere, depending on, well, we paid that sub, because again, most of them don't have a bachelor's degree, you're paying that sub less than a hundred dollars a day. Right, so they're actually making more.
I think kinda my thought, if you had seven, how, how many on a daily basis, how many substitutes do we have?
Uh, I don't like to tell you a month, it's about eleven thousand dollars a month.
You know, you could hire, you could hire, you know, six or seven floating pairs to, you know, substitute classes and so on and so forth. And I mean, I, I might put aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there.
Well, we could certainly look at it. I, I think part of our, part of our challenge though, and this is why you, you're looking at it going, we have a lot of turnover of pairs, is because we have a good number, I think it's, I think it's less than five, but we have a number of pair of positions that are just continually open. That, because there's just not enough applicants out there to fill those.
So that's a, every single kid in the whole school, so I need to identify something about, I'm gonna go to the pair.
But they want to say, you're just a kid.
No, that's all.
Right.
But they really didn't. There is one thing I'd like to do, and we're doing that Sunday training with almost all pairs.
Right.
I had like five, I had like five pairs going to that training, and today, I pretty much had to work without pairs, because they were in the training today, so.
Is our pay scale on pairs pretty comparable to what I do in the home state?
Teachers are double.
Um, it's, it's, I would say it's somewhat comparable. Based on the, based on the work we did two years ago, it's comparable to the northeast corner. You know, it's also one of those things where, you know, we would have to have the discussion, and we will have the discussion in the spring when we look at, at salaries, on, you know, are we, are we spreading, you know, let's say we have, whatever it is, let's say we've got three-hundred-thousand dollars that we wanna put towards additional salaries, right? Well, are we spreading that over all of classified, only? Are we spreading it over classified and certified? Are we spreading that only in pairs? I mean, we could, we could do a lot of, a lot of increasing if we were just gonna raise pairs.
Right.
But the truth is, your kitchen staff is gonna say, what about us? And, and they should, right?
Office ladies.
The office ladies, secretaries, what about us? And custodial and maintenance, what about us? And so I think that, that becomes the challenge, right?
Oh, yeah, I know there's good parts to it, but I just.
But I think, yeah.
I just feel that, you know, I think, like I say, every time we have a meeting.
But everybody wants to learn.
But yes, I, I think you're right. I mean, that is something that we do need to look at, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more item, and then we have our, a couple of, a couple of things for executive session. Our, our next item, our last action item is Donnie Martin Center enrollment. I look back, e, e, whenever we have these students that need to attend Donnie Martin Center, we have a tuition agreement, and last year, I don't believe we had anybody, a year before, we had a couple of kiddos this year. We do have a, at least one kiddo. So we're bringing the tuition agreement with Donnie Martin Center to the board for approval, so we do need access to that educational option. Now, one of the things that Courtney and I have talked about, and we talked about it again today, is I would like, and I know she would, she would like to, to negotiate this cost to the Donnie Martin Center before we need access to it. So what I would like to see is I, and this is one of the conversations we had, I would like to see the school district and the Donnie Martin Center enter into a negotiated agreement, if you will, on tuition on a two-year basis. Now, I haven't had any conversation with anybody at Donnie Martin, but I, I would think a two-year basis would be the right thing to do. Why a two-year basis? Because that's how we're funded, right? The legislature funds us for a two-year cycle, it's the same for the two years, and then they look at it again. I don't see any reason why our agreement with the Donnie Martin Center is any different than the state's agreement with us. So we would ask for approval on this, this year, knowing that my intention and her intention is to renegotiate, or really negotiate that for the first time for next fall in the spring and summer of this school year.
Make a motion to approve the Donnie Martin Center student enrollment. Second?
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, to approve the Donnie Martin Center tuition payments, say no. Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we have just a few items for information before executive session. Wanted to just bring your attention, we have our first superintendent's senior advisory meeting on September twenty-sixth of this month. We have a new group that we've identified. Mr. Helms has helped to get those kids together, and we'll be starting those conversations at the end of the month. On Tuesday of next week, so a week from tomorrow, we have scheduled our campus walkthroughs. I will remind you for, that via email. I believe we agreed that the morning time would be the best time, if I remember correctly. Yes, it is. So right now, we're, we're looking at about eight-thirty. I will have a schedule for, for us, which building to be in, when. At the end of that walkthrough, we'll meet for a short meeting to approve the budget. We need to approve the budget before, and have that posted before October first, and since we're all gonna be together on the twenty-third, I thought that would be a good time to do that, so I put that on there. This week, we are actually, we're working with Navholz and, and a video company. We are shooting a millage video. We have Mr. Helms and Mr. Green. Abby have helped to identify kids in our community, students, who would be utilizing our new building, so we're talking tenth graders, ninth graders, who will be shooting a video designed to support, or at least encourage and inform, that's really what it is. It's really about encouraging and informing our community to support the, the millage. So we're shooting that, I believe that's on Wednesday, and so that will be forthcoming, and we're looking forward to that. Our next public meeting will be Monday, the twenty-second, six P M. at the communities, Community Center. Hopefully, we won't have as much competition for time that night. We'll have maybe a, a couple of fewer meetings going on, and we'll have a, a little bit more, few people, and we will have updated drawings for people to look at as well. So that's just a, a couple of notes for upcoming things over the next couple of weeks. Any questions or concerns about anything? If not, I would request that we adjourn into executive session.
Do we need a motion? All those, motion and a second to go into the executive session. All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Hey, the board will now resume back into regular session.
Uh, it's, I'm just gonna note time, because I'll need it for the, for the minutes, seven thirty-three. Okay, so you have the personnel agenda in front of you. I'm making a recommendation this evening that we approve the new hires of Stephanie Twiman as a bus driver, Caitlin Ragsdale as a para, Karen Dalton in the elementary cafeteria, Lacey Gutierrez as a sped para. We're also recommending the transfer of Johnny Gibson from maintenance to transportation.
Been a motion and a second to approve the personnel changes. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, motion passes four zero.
Uh, you also have a list of the most recent transfers, both out of the district and into the district, that have come in since our work session. So those have been approved. If there's any questions, be happy to, to answer those at any time. If there's no other questions or business, we just need to.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.